Okay. Okay, you all, we're back for the budget hearing. Mr. Clerk, Calderon.
Councilwoman Wilson. I see you raised your hand. Councilman David Williams Jr.
Councilman Williams, I need you on camera or on microphone. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Reggie Leon.
Here.
Councilwoman Lily Q. Odom.
Here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay.
Councilman Robert Stevens.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris.
I'm present.
Mayor Gilbert.
I am here. Let's rise again for prayer and pledge of allegiance. We can skip the pledge of allegiance, but we gonna always pray. God of the old and the young, God of this moment and every moment before this and every moment subsequent to this, bless us and keep us. Bless this council, bless this city. Bless your sons and daughters that we would make manifest your will on this planet. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen. All right. Madam Attorney, do you want me to start with this, the very first thing, number one?
Yes.
Okay. This is the first of two public hearings for the adoption of the operating millage and the voted debt service millage rate and budget for the city of Miami Gardens for fiscal year 2020 and 2021. The city clerk is now going to read the title of the millage resolution.
All right, item four, item 4.1, Resolution of City of Miami Gardens, Florida, adopting a proposed millage rate at a public hearing to be levy for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2020 through September 30, 2021, for operating purposes, establishing the rollback rate, establishing the debt millage rate approved by the electorate, setting a date and time for a final public hearing to adopt the final millage rate, provided for directions to the city clerk and provided for effective date, and is sponsored by the city manager.
Thank you. The proposed millage rate for the city for fiscal year 2020, 21 is 6.9363, which is 8.09% over the rollback rate, and the voted debt debt service millage rate is 0.7803. The aggregate millage rate for fiscal year 2021 is 7.7166. The manager will now have a presentation for the millage rate and the voted debt service millage rate.
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Manager.
Mayor, you've read what I was gonna read for the millage rate. The presentation will be for the budget.
Oh, okay. Well, go ahead.
With that, with that, Mayor, I'm gonna call on the deputy city manager to do the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Gilbert, Vice Mayor Harris, members of the council, Craig Clay, Deputy City Manager. I'm going to share my screen with you so that you can see and follow along with the presentation. What you should see is a slide that says, City of Miami Gardens Fiscal Year 2021 Proposed Budget. When we met back in July, one of the things that we first talked about was where we believe we would be at the end of fiscal year 2020. We updated this slide from our July 22 presentation. Although better than before, we are still anticipating a loss of around $5.3 million through the end of fiscal year 2020. As mentioned before, our inability to collect revenue because of COVID-19 has significantly affected our ability to close that deficit. COVID, we continue to expect to have COVID-related expenses into fiscal year 2021. You may also remember during our July 22 presentation that we talked a lot about pursuing reimbursement from FEMA for those expenses that will be eligible, and also working with Miami-Dade County to receive funding from the CARES Act. We are in ongoing discussions with Miami-Dade County. We have submitted reimbursement for all expenditures that we believe are eligible, and we are now waiting on the county to come back to us with some resolution of that request. Whatever it is that happens, we know that we must continue to remain nimble and flexible during fiscal year 2021 so that we can address any changes in a very fiscally responsible manner. You may also recall that at our July 22 meeting, there were four key revenue sources that we were waiting confirmation on. Three of those are highlighted in the chart, absent sales tax, state revenue sharing, and telecommunications tax. Absent sales tax, state revenue sharing came in about $180,000 less than what our original estimate was. That is not a surprise to us because these are mainly consumption taxes, and because of the shutdown of the economy, these came in lower than we had originally estimated. Telecommunications tax came in slightly higher, about $32,000 than our original estimate provided to you back in July. In addition, electric franchise fees are anticipated to be higher. This is also not a surprise to us. If you remember back in 2019, we inked a new agreement with Florida Power and Light, which superseded the agreement that they had with Miami-Dade County, which expired last year as well. As mentioned, the operating millage rate will remain 6.9363 for the seventh consecutive year. On the expenditure side, this is the first year of the CRA. We mentioned that to you also back in July. We will continue to work hard to operate and maintain those new park improvements that are coming on through our GOB. A couple of new items that surfaced, as far as health insurance is concerned, we had anticipated an increase of around 21%. A lot of that is based on our costs carriers' costs to cover our plan. We were able to negotiate that increase down to 15.9% moving forward in fiscal year 2021. Last year's increase was around 18%. Those are significant increases, so we will be looking to potentially go out for an RFP moving into next year. You will also remember that there was a voter-approved referendum to make changes to mayor and council member compensation. That is also included in tonight's agenda for presentation. The operating and debt service millage combined is 7.7166. You may also recall that at the July 8 and July 22 council meetings, we had asked your approval to go out and refinance the general obligation bonds. It was a more successful refinancing than we had anticipated. Originally, we had anticipated our debt service millage to drop to about 0.80 mills. After the closing, we were able to reduce the debt service millage to 0.7803 mills. In addition to the presentation tonight, you were also provided a comprehensive change memorandum, which highlights in more detail all of the things that I've just talked to you about this evening. Tonight is our first public hearing. Our final public hearing will be September 23 at 6:00 PM. With that, Mayor and council, we will accept any questions that you may have.
Mr. Mayor.
Hold on. Before we go to questions, Madam Attorney, getting us back on track, do I need to do public comment now?
Yes, you need to do public comment, and this public comment is really supposed to be for the millage rate because we have to do that first. The public comment on the ordinance will come later.
Okay, so public comment is open on the millage rate?
Yeah.
Ms. Clerk?
Yeah, we do. We have two hands raised up.
Okay.
The first one is Maria Delatorre.
Bring Miss Delatorre on camera.
All right, Miss Delatorre is not there anymore.
There she is.
There she is. There we go. Waiting for her to unmute.
I think I'm back.
Can you hear you, Ms. Delatorre?
Yes.
Hey, state your name and your address to the record.
Yes, Maria Delatorre, 18115 Northwest 43rd Avenue, Miami Gardens.
Thank you. Continue with your comment.
Um, I have a question. I have noticed when I go around our area, we have a millage rate proposal of 6.9363 versus cities like that we are like, you know, pretty much neighbors with are going around. Our own incorporated is about 1.92. Miami Lakes is about 2.32. Aventura, Sony Isles are very low. Cities where, you know, don't even have to pay for, you know, fire rescue, to put us an example, we're going with, you know, about five on the five. Is there any specific reason why it's our millage rate so high compared to other cities that they're pretty much neighbors with my address? I have properties that, you know, the value of their property is it's double of what my property has, and I still paying the same amount of taxes. When I go to the millage rate for Miami Gardens, I notice that it's, you know, compared to those other two lights from my home, from those homes, are paying a lot less when it comes to the millage rate, and it's what's really affecting my property taxes to say. I just feel that it's a very high millage rate compared to cities like I mentioned. The unincorporated part of the county, we have Miami Lakes, even, you know, cities that I have compared word, it is within the same range. They still don't even pay fire rescue because it is part of their city budget on that millage rate. So I'm kind of concerned because honestly, our property taxes in general, when we look at the millage rate, it's very high.
Okay, thank you. Is that your comment, Ms. Delatorre?
Ah, yes, that's my concern right now. Why it's so high compared to all of the cities that we have pretty much around the area.
Thank you, Ms. Delatorre. Mr. Clerk, who's next?
Next one we have is Sharon Benjamin.
Ms. Benjamin, please state your name and your address to the record.
Hold on, wait until I mute her. There she goes.
Hi, good evening. This is Sharon Benjamin. My address is 1471 Northwest 179th Street, Miami Gardens, Florida 33169. I am also in agreeance with Ms. Delatorre that our millage rate is very, very high. And I can say from since I've lived in this city that every year I've seen an increase in my taxes, every single year, but I have not seen much changes in my area of Scott Lake. And I want to know why our rates are so high, why is there an increase? And how can we as homeowners try to get some type of help? A lot of us are losing our homes because of this.
Thank you. Is that your public comment, Ms. Benjamin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The next person we have is Yohara Hernandez. Hold on, we're bringing her over.
Hi, good afternoon. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Yohara Hernandez, and my address is 3875 Northwest 171 Terrace. And pretty much I have the same concern as the other two resident of our city and why our millage rate is so high compared to the others. I've been checking like every city pretty much in South Florida, and I can tell you we are one of the highest, not to say the highest, on the millage rate. And we just want to know, you know, based on why and specific why, if there is some way then that can be break down and explanation to us to know why is that amount compared to others so we can we can better understand our highest taxes. And as the other lady before me said, I know a lot of people that are having struggle and hard time paying the taxes.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
All right, the next one is Paula Funes.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My address is 18125 Northwest 43rd Avenue. And I come to you guys today this evening with the same concern as my other neighbors, which is to know why is it higher in Miami Garden City compared to neighboring cities? And also of when we could expect either a response or a clarification of why the increase is higher compared to other cities. Would really like to know how you guys will follow through with our concerns as constituents of Miami Gardens for us to get a better understanding of what is being done with our funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Funes.
And right now I'm showing no hands raised, pre-registered public comments, and I have no one downstairs in the chambers to provide.
Public comment is now closed. Thank you. Council members, would you all like me to address the comments before we go any further?
Yes, I think that'll be appropriate.
Yeah, I would also.
Okay. Millage rates and budgets are interesting things. When you say the millage rate has increased, the millage rate actually has an increase. The millage rate has been 6.9363 for probably the past eight to 10 years. It's been the same ever since I was a mayor. The reason why we have a millage rate that size is because when the city was incorporated, it was incorporated basically with a tax base of single-family homes. So not to deviate from the budget of the millage specifically, but when we have conversations with people about increasing the industrial buildings, increasing office buildings, actually building apartments and condominiums and density, we have that conversation because we understand that it's necessary for the fiscal health of a community. It's necessary for you to do have that type of density and have those type of uses that tax at a higher rate, that tax at a higher value, so you can tax at a lower rate. So when you look, for instance, at places like Aventura, Aventura has a mall and a whole bunch of businesses and a whole bunch of density. So they might not have a whole bunch of land, but they go straight up, and that land tax is at a higher value. Miami Gardens is relatively flat. We have single-family homes. That means you're spreading it out among those single-family homes. The same with cities like Hialeah, who have an extraordinary amount of industrial office and retail space. So when you see the council and the manager bringing items to constantly change zoning and increase businesses in Miami Gardens and increase industrial uses in Miami Gardens and increase in density in Miami Gardens, the reason why we're doing that is because we want to bring down the millage rate. So those other cities aren't the third largest city in the county people-wise, but they were incorporated, we weren't incorporated with a whole bunch of enterprise funds, so we don't have the ability to have water. We don't have the ability to have utility. We don't have the ability to do our own garbage. All of those things were kept separate from the city of Miami Gardens. What we basically have is utility taxes and our millage rate. And in this year, where we would have gotten money coming in from people who wanted to do things because of COVID, we don't even have that. So I understand your frustration because actually I pay taxes also. I pay taxes and my family's pay taxes here my entire life. But until we have a more comprehensive conversation that speaks to not just the millage rate, but what you want, so that you actually will allow and not come out and protest when people want to bring the industrial to the area because industrial has a high value and it allows us to lower the millage rate everywhere. People want to bring condominiums and apartments, and yes, some of those apartments will be condos that you buy, but some of them, we market rate apartments for young professionals. That allows you to have densities, you can tax all the way up. When you able to have those type of assets in the community, then you're able to lower the millage in the community. So that's why when the manager and I go out and the council members go out, we talk so infusively about development and bringing businesses. It's not just because we're in love with businesses. It's not just because we want people to have things to shop at, like at the promenade and all that stuff. All of that stuff is true, but we're doing those things. We're doing things like the Performing Arts Center so that that Performing Arts Center can be an anchor to apartments and retail and entertainment and all of that stuff in that area, which actually adds to the tax base. And when you add to the tax base, then you get to reduce the millage. That's the technical answer. Mr. Man, did you have anything to add to that?
No, man, I think you hit all the points.
Thank you. Yes.
How can we explain to the people on when they receive their tax bills, what it really looks like? I mean, I was looking at mine, and I probably pay some of the highest taxes in the city. And three-fourths of my tax bill doesn't come to the city of Miami Gardens.
No, it goes to the school board, and it goes to the county, and it goes to fire, and it goes to a lot of other stuff. So if you can't pay your residential taxes because of the city of Miami Gardens, it's probably all the other stuff because there's this in there, and a lot of there's is more. So that, but that's, I understand their frustration as residents because you live in the city, and when you get the bill, it's, you know, it'll be like the city of Miami Gardens, and you think that whole thing is accessible to the city of Miami Gardens. And so what has happened here in Miami Gardens is, and this is why people, we all are paying more as homeowners, even though the millage has remained the same, is that we've done a good job of increasing the value of the property in Miami Gardens. So the reason why you're feeling like your taxes, like the millage was raised, the millage is the same, but the property value went up. And typically, we haven't had those type of property value increases in this area. And so we've seen some of that. We've seen some of that because of the infrastructure investment. We've seen some of that because of the economic development. We've seen some of that. So it's gonna seem like you're paying more in millage, but really your property value went up and you have more equity in your home. Mr. Clerk, where are we?
Time for a motion, Mayor, from the council and discussion by the council.
Motion. It's been moved, and what do we?
There's discussion, and then we defer this until after the budget discussion.
It's been moved. Any comments, questions from the council?
Yes, can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Excuse me, excuse me, Mayor, I didn't hear the second. I'm sorry.
I second.
Thank you.
Mr. Leon?
I threw the mayor to the manager. Can you just refresh? There's a big, after the refinancing, there's a great deal of savings that's gonna go directly to the residents, correct?
That's correct, Councilman. We did a refinancing on the general obligation bonds. If Craig, can you pull that slide up again so we can show where that decreases coming and the savings back to the residents?
Can you see that?
Yeah.
So that is, if you look down at the bottom there, Councilman Leon, we went from 0.8315 mills to 0.7803 mills.
So that's like, what, about $250 per resident, a house?
It would depend on the value of their home.
Yeah. Well, that's a combination of operating and debt service.
Well, and what that means is the combination of operating and debt service means that people are actually playing the effective combined millage that's less than last year.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Where are we on our fund balance? Mr. Manager. Currently, our fund balance sits at about 26.1%. As you know, the going fund balance based on GFOA standards is about 15%, so we're about 26.1%. I think that gives us close to about $20 million in our fund balance.
Mr. Williams, just for your information and for public's information also, we've been, how we've been continuing to go as we haven't been taking in revenue, and COVID has hit us hard, is we've essentially been spending out of our fund balance.
I mean, that's what I thought. That's what I was.
That's why we're lower. Well, we're lower than we were. Yeah, so if ever we can get some of that money back from the CARES Act and the county, hopefully we can, you know, boost back up, but we'll see.
It's a great thing we had that available. Some cities didn't.
A lot of cities did.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Manager.
Just to make sure if it's all clear, remember, we also had a one-time sale of property that assisted with that whole process as well. So that helped keep us out of the, out of a bad situation unlike other cities.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, where, Madam Attorney?
Mayor, we need to move to defer the millage rate item until after the discussion of the budget item.
Okay. Mr., I'll move to defer the millage rate item. I need a second.
Second.
It's been second, it's moving second to defer this millage rate item. All those in favor of deferring the millage rate item, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, show it deferred. Okay.
All right, now we're on to item 5.1. In order to the city council, the city of Miami Gardens, Florida approving and adopting the city's budget for the 2020-2021 fiscal year, provided for expenditure funds, authorize the city manager to take certain actions, provided for carryover of funds, provided for inter-fund transfers, provided for automatic amendment, provided for adoption representation, repealing all ordinances in conflict, provided severability clause, providing for an effective date, and this is sponsored by the city manager.
Mr. Manager, you don't have a presentation that's different than the one that was offered previously?
No, we do not, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll let that presentation stand. Mr. Clerk, where are we?
Public comment, Mayor, on the budget.
Public comment on the budget is now open. Public comment on the budget is now open.
Give me one second. We did have some hands raised. Hold on. Here we go. Sonya Flowers.
Do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now, Ms. Flowers. Give us your name and your address.
Okay, Sonya Flowers, Miami Gardens, Florida 33056. I wanted to get some clarification because I have a small business here in the city of Miami Gardens, and I'm a home-based small business. Now, I pay more local business tax here in the city of Miami Gardens than I pay for Miami-Dade County. Miami-Dade County is only $60 per year. And the city of Miami Gardens, I pay $120 local business tax plus $18.90 for property usage. Now, if I'm already paying property taxes, why should I have to turn around and still pay $18.90 plus the local business tax is even higher than any other city? Can someone explain me what is going on there and how can we make this better for small businesses? Because we are struggling like it is right now, so.
Is that your comment, Ms. Flowers?
Yes, that's my question and my concern.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else with their hand up? I don't see anyone with their hand up, Mr. Manager, Ms. Clerk?
No, and no pre-registered on public comments, and we have nobody in the chambers for public comments.
Public comment is now closed. Mr. Clay, you want to talk about the $18 thing assessment?
Yes, Mayor, the local business tax is a standard $120 per year for businesses. And if there is a home-based business, there is a fee of $18.90, as Ms. Flower said. That fee is consistent with the fees that are charged in other places, other cities. We've done that analysis as we've set those fees, so we're comfortable that they are consistent with what is going on elsewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. I'll look at the chart, but I kind of thought when we talked. Thank you, Mr. Clay. I, I, I'll look at the chart, but I, I, I kind of thought when we talked about it before they were consistent, but I'll look at the comparison. And, uh, if we need to, we'll revisit it. All right, where are we at now, Mr. Clerk?
We need a motion on the item.
I need a motion on the budget item.
Motion.
Motion. It's been moved and it's been seconded. Uh, questions are, are we doing a question to comment or do we go back to the mileage?
Oh, you, comments, right? You're on mute, Sonia.
Discussion and then you go back to the mileage.
All right, council for discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I just want to thank, uh, the city manager, Craig, Martha, and Yvette for the, uh, the workshop that we've had. I mean, I, I had a lot of questions, a lot of notes. And, um, we were able to get those answers. I just want to thank them for the job that they did.
Thank you. All right, thank you all. Um, okay, same normal comments from council. I need, do I need to defer this and go back to the mileage?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, um, I need a motion to defer this until we consider the mileage.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We defer this until we consider the mileage. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, show it deferred until we consider the mileage. Mr. Clerk, could you recall the mileage item?
Want me to read the item or you want to call a motion to bring it back?
I'm gonna call the motion and bring it.
You, you don't have to bring it back, Mayor.
Okay.
Yes, you, I'm sorry. Yes, you do. You have the motion to be called. I'm sorry.
I need, I need a motion to recall the mileage item. It's been moved. It's been seconded. All those in favor of recalling the mileage item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, show the mileage item recalled. Um, are, are there any further comments on the mileage item? Mr. Clerk, call the roll on the mileage.
Right.
Councilwoman Odom? Councilwoman Odom?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilman Leon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
I vote yes.
Mayor Gilbert?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, now I think I need a motion to recall the budget item.
Correct.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We recall the budget item. All those in favor of recalling the budget item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, show the budget item recalled. Mr. Clerk, call the roll on the budget.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilman Leon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Odom?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Gilbert?
I vote yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. The next public hearing will be held on September twenty-third, twenty twenty at six P M via virtual Zoom meeting. At that time, we will consider the final mileage rate and the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. All right, and that is the budget.
What time did you say that's gonna be, Mayor?
It's gonna be six o'clock.
Thank you.
Oh, and, and this will be at the budget as amended, will be considered at that time. All right, thank you. And I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adjourn. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, show us adjourns. We will reconvene at seven o'clock. Ms. Clerk?
Um, we can, we can go right into it. It's, it's at the will of you and the council.
Okay, um, you all want to take a five-minute break or go right into it?
We go right into it.
Okay, um, Mr. Clerk?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can I be heard here for a second?
Yes.
We're going right, you, you noticed the, the regular meeting for this time?
Yes, the regular meeting was noticed for six one and the notices did say that it will follow immediately after the budget hearing.
Good job, Mr. Clerk. Okay.
Thank you.
We're all American.
What, what Mario said was, who gonna check me, boo? Yeah.
You know, I got a attorney, I got a good attorney with me.
You're an all-American.
We covered, we can start right now.
What'd you say, Reggie? We're all American city.
All American city.
All right now, all American city.
You're killing me. Um, all right, um, Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilwoman Odom?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Here.
Councilman Stevens?
Here.